For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome everyone. Sure, sure. It's a good idea. Okay. Our council, you have in front of you the agenda for this evening. We'll get to the consent agenda items in a few minutes if you want to follow anything. There are a number, we, uh, the council has an amended agenda. I don't know if that's been distributed yet, but, uh, so I'm asking the council to approve an agenda with the amendments that are highlighted in yellow.
So I'll make, okay, I'll second.
By Council Waller and by Councilor Nimi. And just so everyone knows, uh, before we get into the nuisance hearings, I'm going to exercise mayor prerogative, hoping that the charter commission chair doesn't call me out on that and, and move our guest up for the presentation before we get into the nuisance hearings. So, uh, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Uh, so you now have the consent agenda items. Is there anything you wish to have pulled? We did get the fire and ambulance report right before the meeting and, uh, especially that permit for Honktoberfest. Those were added, but, uh, is there anything that any of the councils wish to have pulled?
No.
Is there a motion to prove that you consent?
Support.
As presented, was that a motion?
Yeah.
Support.
You guys are way too fast. Did you catch either Councilor Berg or Councilor Gondish and what's left? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Simon, I'm going to invite you to come up so you don't have to sit through the nuisance hearing, unless it's something that's really near and dear to your heart, but. Yeah. Simon, Simon Charter is from New Range Copper Nickel. He contacted me last week, uh, wanted to have a meeting and I threw you guys under the bus and said, let's, let's do a council. Actually, actually, it was Simon's idea. I didn't throw it at you. Welcome, Simon.
Well, thank you, thank you for having me. As Mayor said, my name is Simon Charter. I'm the community and social performance manager over at New Range Copper Nickel. It's my job to engage communities and a key piece of that is making sure you guys know what we're up to. Uh, we've been pretty quiet over the last year and a half since the merger. For those of you who don't know, um, PolyMet is no more. There was a merger between what was PolyMet, Tech. We are now New Range. Uh, it's a new company with two separate projects. The old North Med project, which we've all heard about for many, many years, the PolyMet project, um, and the Masaba project up at David, which is a pretty massive deposit, but we're a group of years out on that one. So over the last year and a bit, we, um, have been focusing on pursuing the merger. Fortunately, the companies are still a bit, uh, to get these two mining giants to, to start working together and, you know, there's some things to work out there. Not a case, but we all know we got two big guys in the room to work out some of the, some of those power dynamics. Uh, but the other thing we did was we, um, we really looked at the project and then said, okay, where can we work on this project to, to improve our, our chances of getting across community joint here? So, uh, we're now at a point where we're, we're ready to start to open up what's, what's next for us. And, um, over the next nine months to 12 months, we're going to be doing four major studies, um, on the project. Now, we all know that we were fully permitted, uh, this past year or a little, yeah, just over a year ago. We lost our, our one major permit for a full permit. Um, we'd like to get that back, obviously, but this is an opportunity for us to really look at how we can get back in, in a way that we have all the support and, and this project started 20 years ago. A lot's changed in the world since then, both in terms of how mining works, uh, how community engagement works, how, um, sustainable development works. So this is a great opportunity for us to, to really optimize in those areas. So we're going to be doing four major studies over the next year. The first one, we're going to be looking at our tailings facility. Our existing approval basically says keep using the existing LTV tailings facilities. As most of you know, this, the, the old North Med project is a 90% impacted site. It's an old operation that we'd like to, to start upgrading again. Uh, it has an existing tailings facility. The plan was to keep using that tailings facility as is. That tailings facility did generate some concern during permitting. So, uh, what we'd like to do is assess some alternatives. There is nothing wrong with the existing tailings facility. It's not because it is a, there are any issues that it was permitted, but, you know, optimization. Can, can we maybe find some, some different or better solutions? So we're going to be looking at different tanks than construction options and, uh, we're also going to be looking at potential for tailings input in existing pits upon keeping them for the property. So rather than building a new tailings facility, is there, is there an opportunity to fill in some of those old pits? That'd be a great opportunity. Some of the Dakonan mines out here do that. Um, that would be a pretty good opportunity to, to, you know, work on some legacy issues at the same time as, as we run through some tanks. So more to come on that one. Again, these are studies. We have no idea where they're going to go, but kind of like the ideas of that. The second thing we're going to be looking at is the original project design had a water treatment facility. The PolyMet project was very proud of the fact that they said that they would meet the wild rice standards. Uh, the first project to say that they can actually meet those pretty, um, pretty stringent standards. Water treatment technologies come a lot of places that permit application went in. And now with the expertise from Tech and Glencore, um, let's see if maybe there's some even better solutions to what we proposed in that original application, which was a reverse process plant. We will in no way step back any of those commitments in terms of water treatment. Uh, maybe we can be better. Let's see if we're going to, we're going to look into that as well. The third thing we want to look at is the original application had a throughput, um, or throughput through the facility of 32,000 tons per day. We like to look at potentially going up to 40,000. This would improve efficiencies in the mill. That kind of aligns with, with the way, um, milling, um, activities happen these days. So again, we're going to look into that, um, and see if that is a feasible option. The last thing we're going to look at over the next year or so is that site, the old LTV site, it's crisscrossed with, with railways. The plan for moving all on site was by rail or diesel cars. Our parent companies and us at, at some stage will have commitments, uh, to meet these 2015, um, carbon neutral goals. So we've got to look at ways to, to reduce our carbon footprint. So, uh, one potential way of doing that is instead of using those, those rail cars is to build conveyors on site. Very common on, on general mine operations. That's not something new, uh, but it would be new to the project and, and would require, um, additional footprint and, and additional construction out there. So no major decisions, no decision at all at this stage in terms of what the project's going to look like, but we're going to embark on these studies for the next year or so. The reason we're waiting to you guys is we just want to make sure the whole community knows exactly what we're up to as we go forward on this project. Now that we're at a point where, where we're starting to think about alternatives, we'd like you guys to know about them. If you guys have any concerns, questions, would like to know anything else about what we're up to, um, we're open to those questions. We're also open to having anyone out there to take a look at what we've been up to.
Are you open to?
I just realized that I have a funny accent. So if anyone didn't understand that, do I need to repeat any of that, please? Any questions on?
We'll start with the council.
No, I.
No, I thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thanks for the update.
Absolutely great. Anything we can do to help is by all means.
And if anyone would like to see if we have put a lot of work into that old concentrator out there. Old mills are out, 24,000 tons of steel's out.
Wow.
65,000 tons of, of concrete ready to be recycled as well. It's a very different place. Simon, at that last camp, would you give a quick update on higher? We do have a few positions open at the moment. I think we have four open positions at the moment. I can't remember if we remember what they are. We do, uh, they are on our website, newrangecoppernickel.com. I made it so long. But, but you know what we're doing and, uh, so, so we do often have, um, job vacancies opening. We've doubled our workforce up there since February last since the merger. We were at 27, we're at 62 now. Um, so we, we're getting there. We're, we're working very hard on getting to where we're definitely.
What was that, New Range Copper?
Um, and also open to suggestions anywhere you guys, or you guys would like to see us a little more, um, who might, I don't know, would like to know more about the work to, where, where, we have been pretty quiet for a little while.
Do you guys have any like plans for another? I know, I know through the, the North Med project, through PolyMet and, and thereon, there was a couple of open houses and kind of some public forums with, uh, displays on some of the plans. I know obviously you guys have got some updated plans with the new technology, but is there, is there anything in the works for maybe like a, a public?
You know, it's definitely something that we'd like to do at this stage. You know, it's been, it's been tough, you know, being a community guy without that much to talk about. Very excited to have these talking points now and all these studies. You know, we're gonna, at the end of this, these studies and probably in numerous times along the way, we'll have information to present as we start generating findings from these studies. And we will absolutely, you know, we'll, we'll want to share the, the news, um, as early as possible. The last thing we want to happen is get to permitting and the communities hear about what we plan to do on here permitting. So we'd like to, to stay at that, keep everyone at present. That being said, there will be multiple public input periods during permitting and no matter what we do, there will be additional permitting. And it's, it's the way we live. Yeah, and so there will be four more public comment periods as well outside of just information sharing. I do love taking people out to site, so if people would like to come up and take a look at what's happening out in the north.
I, I would suggest you perceive it caution. Ms. Holmstrom had a question.
I do have a question. If you're not going to use the rails and you're going to use the conveyor, then what do you use to transport?
So that, that transport is just on site. So it's just moving material within our, our boundaries, not getting material, you know, up, you know.
You don't ship the material?
We're not going to ship the, the concentrate by, you know, the conveyor as well, maybe on site. So to move the material on site will be rail. We're just talking about, you know, on, on site.
Okay.
Or, or, yeah. Which is significant quantity of material.
Oh.
It's a lot.
Do, do you have business cards? If you, do you dare?
Um, yeah, actually, this is customer, if anybody would like.
I would love one. I'd, I'd love to.
Did anybody else have questions for Simon while we've got him here? Yeah, Tom.
How many, uh, full-time employees do you, I don't know, I mean, once everything's like up to speed, it's broke this.
So for North Med, probably 360, so it's not massive. Uh, North Med is, you know, 30,000 tons per day or 40,000 tons per day. We know from the tech line down there that's pretty low throughput. The Masaba project, which is obviously a separate project and will, will be accounted much later, that, that is a significant project. You know, if we're looking at North Med, we're looking at 15 to 20 years life of mine. Masaba is significantly larger. But we're still pretty early in, in project development there.
Anyone else?
I have a book on, thank you.
See if you did, you want to?
Sure. Thank you very much.
I'm sure I have it.
You could go tour like, tour around, you could hear it to yours. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Simon. We appreciate it. It is 6:16 PM. I'm going to recess the regular meeting so we can move into our nuisance hearing. Uh, we have, so I think nine, uh, cases to consider. Thanks, thanks, Simon. So I'm going to start in the order that I have in here on the agenda. So I guess the chief's not here, so you're, you're fielding all this by yourself, Jeff?
Correct.
Okay, let's get going then. First one is 603 Third Street North. At least that's what I have on the agenda.
We have this stack of photos on the tables down.
Yeah, I'll let Jeff update it and then we'll defer to you. I presume you're the property owner too. Do you have any updates you want to share with us?
Um, looks like from the pictures, there's significant progress.
Councils, any questions before I turn it over to the homeowner, to the property owner? Nope. Fire away.
Okay, so pursuant to your ordinance, since that, you know, I have my, um, originally in the photo, it must be on gravel, but because the pitch of the alleyway, every spring, any time it's raining, it washes away my gravel. And it, and right now it's growing grass because it's retaining my gravel at this point. And I just wanted to make sure that it, it is okay that I still park my house out in summertime. I can't put it in on my vehicles at this point.
I, I guess what I would say, I think they have to be 25 feet back from the street according to the ordinance. I'm not positive, but I, as far as I remember, that's what they need to be.
And our driveways, you park it basically on the street of the driveway.
Yeah, driveways are different though. I mean, you could probably put them on your driveway and it would be fine, but not on the grassy area.
No, no, no.
Wow.
The whole left side of my garage normally has gravel on it, so you can park anything just like to.
The updated photos in the meeting.
Jeff has shared photos. These are taken today, Jeff?
Correct.
I think the updated photos, everything looks well within standards.
I think these homeowners worked extremely hard to update.
Yep.
Very proud of, for you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I was very, actually kind of upset with the service of this mailing. You guys posted the second, I was posting the sixth, I didn't receive it till the 10th. I only had a few days to correct the issue. And had I not checked my mail, I wouldn't even know how it would have been on the nuisance agenda today. Is there some sort of ordinance where it's like 30 days when you need to go home or like a 30-day you can pay rent or a 40-day you can pay this day instead of a three-day list?
Jeff, how, how were these, uh, sent out?
Uh, I'm going to either mail and personal service by police.
No, we did not get certified.
Oh, okay, that's. There's a business mailing.
I know it, in some cases in the past, we've had to do certified or, or hand delivered just because of the difficulty with addresses.
Now we can take a look at that.
Yeah, that's, that's, we try to give as much notice as po- as possible.
This was like expedited notice in my personal thinking. And then I also noted on that side, you guys have that you're going to charge $300 per hour to remove any of my belongings. That is an exorbitant fee and I believe the federal government back in 2019 deemed that no counter means that a leak could do that. You also note that the current cost for nuisance abatement includes the abatement and administrative costs. The second sentence says the property owner will also be liable for any administrative costs yet again. So that's two double-digit administrative costs.
Larry, do you have any?
Do you want to take a look at that?
I can take a look at it now.
Just so the council knows.
And, and as you might surmise, the intent is to not ever have to charge.
Right. Well, I understand that, but it is governed. I've been such a good woman, I know. We have the right side of our lawn and we do need to park a few trailers on our street. Well, it wouldn't even be our front yard, it's our street yard. Is that okay as long as we park them there and still go along? Or do you want me to put gravel and that's going to wash out because my whole backyard turns in with floods all the spring?
Well, there is a ordinance for parking on the street. You're not supposed to park anything on the street for more than 48 hours.
So that's what I'm requesting from the city council is I have the right side of my house is a grassy area, which you have a picture now because we did a paid, paid load everything. Can we still utilize this space to park more trailers? Because right now it's acting as erosion control because my backyard floods. And if I continue to do it, it's going to again wash out into the street.
I guess the bad thing is, is that you're on a corner, so it's like you don't really have a backyard, you know?
That's, I'm, I'm trying to be amicable and like extend, I changed my fence and put them inside of there so it's not considered a nuisance. I'm trying to work with you guys. There's a whole many of things that are nuisance.
I, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I feel like we're really trying to reach an accommodation here and, uh, I'm, for myself, I'm satisfied with what's been, what's been done and, um.
But you said you still have a couple more that you have to park somewhere.
Yeah, right now, well, he's trying to sell the camera, so that's no longer there. But we'll have at least one or, one more trailer that is going to result that comes with my lyrics razor.
I don't see any.
We'll continue with it.
First of all, I appreciate you even coming for this. I, I really appreciate that. Most people don't even show up for it.
This is, this is very novel for us to have, to be actually here.
And then I was going to ask Jeff, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but if, if he and I go down and look to see physically what you're talking about so that we all understand.
Absolutely.
Would that be okay with you and not offensive?
Could you guys check out the alley so we can keep our backyard flooded?
Do that, Jeff.
It's, it's, it was 10 thousand, it would have been okay, but it literally is too big doors.
Stretches from behind Frank, Frank's house all the way to Judy's.
Judy's in there right there.
And it's all from, yeah.
I would just like to see what you're talking about.
Okay.
You know, physically so that, you know, it's not just a description. Cause I don't go up and down all the alleys all the time and so I would just like to see, could we do that, Jeff? So he and I'll do that and then we could give you a call. Is there a certain time that's convenient for you?
Anytime.
Anytime, okay. And you have their phone number? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, what, what motion would you like, or would you be comfortable with?
Do you have a motion that the violation had been cured and dismissing the notice?
Okay.
Support.
I was going to say, but is it contingent upon Jeff and Kathy going out to look?
That sounded like a different problem.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Councilor Berg. Was there, was there?
I'll support.
It's part of the council coverage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you again for coming. Uh, item number two, 126 Third Avenue South. Jeff, do you want to bring us up to speed on this? Those look like there's been some cutting going on. Night and day.
It is kind, it's kind of hard to tell from the, from the pictures. It's also kind of hard to tell in person. Um, there's definitely some grass that's been cut. There are some parts that are intended to be longer, uh, so I can go through the stuff. And then there's some grass that hasn't been cut and it really is kind of hard to put it into those categories.
Where one begins to, where one ends, the other one begins.
Has the majority of it been cut? Is it just like, are these plants they want to save that haven't been cut?
The, the majority of what I would generically call grass has been cut. There is, it's not quite the, they're not exactly the, just kind of the nuisance or the, one of the questions is the visibility of the sign there. It is cut back from the signs, but it goes to that stop sign. I don't believe the homeowner is true, but does kind of look like they have, they have been able to cut the grass, but saved that what they thought was.
Shrubs, shrubs.
I mean, it does look better.
Uh, I'm not sure if the council's aware, but a couple of years ago, the, uh, state legislature did adopt a ruling that, uh, there are exceptions made now for what are considered native wildflowers. And if somebody's got expertise as to what's a weed and what's a native wildflower, uh, if we want to get to that level, we, we may have to make those distinctions. But, uh, yeah, I didn't say I adopted it. I said the legislature did.
It does appear from the photos that the long grass has been cut and, like I said, we can argue all day long on who believes what is a shrub and what is not, but.
I'll make a motion that he has abated the problem.
And the problem, and nuisance is dismissed.
Nuisance is dismissed.
Motion by Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Berg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Item C, uh, parts, excuse me, three, 209 First Avenue North.
A lot of work done on this, a lot of progress made. The property owner did, uh, did notify us that they were actively, uh, looking for the, uh, truck, the haul of the, the vehicle and the separate centers. They, that was underway. I think they had something lined up as if they had, but that was, that was what the property owner told us.
Can we continue this until next month to see if they follow through?
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion. We continue until next month on the property at 209 First Avenue North.
Support.
Move by Councilor Gondish, supported by Councilor Waller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, that, that one's continued. Item four, 113 Fourth Avenue North. And if somebody, the property owner's here for any of these, or you're the official designated, please jump up. I didn't see any familiar faces, so, other than, I guess Jonathan's here. We'll, we'll get you in a few minutes, Simon. Jeff, uh, anything to report?
Uh, this property owner also contacted us to say that, uh, they were working on coming into compliance. The homeowner did state that he had a week or two left on, um, some military training before he, before he would be, do that. There's all the evidence there, but, um, the owner was not, that's going to work.
Council, your issues?
Well, from the photos, there's improvement already and if he made the effort to reach back out, I think it continues until next month to be it. You know?
We're interpreting that as a motion.
A motion, yeah, that's what I.
Which has already been supported. Council understands we're moving to, uh, continue this one to next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, I've got 303 Sixth Avenue North, so I got a 63. Fire away, Jeff. Fire away, Jeff.
Well, it doesn't, let's put, can you tell me exactly on this property? There are two, two of the recent pictures, one shows a kind of a freshly cut lawn. That is actually an angle taken from the north, but that's actually the neighbors' grass that they were looking at. The property that got the notice is actually on the upper left. And the other picture of the grass, that's the actual properties.
Am I only wrong one? Which one are we on?
303.
Oh, okay. Because it says the vehicles.
Right, yeah. So the initial one was just for the vehicles, the grass hasn't, wasn't long. The initial notice was sent out, but since then, it doesn't look like there's any movement on vehicle.
Okay, so this is vehicles and lawn grass then? Although the letter doesn't say anything.
The letter is just for the vehicles.
Okay. I think this property comes before us at least once a year for having too many vehicles. So I would make a motion that we move to abate the property.
The court. It's been moved by Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Mimi, to proceed to declare a nuisance and to proceed with directing staff to manage the abatement process.
Mr. Mayor, we should make sure that the grass is not considered as part of this violation. The only abatement we can do is in regard to the vehicles.
Only what's on the paper. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, 113 First Avenue North, item number six here.
I have a question. Do we even know who owns this?
There is a name attached to it, not in the land record.
But are they?
Is that the Hoots in Texas?
Yes. This land has been tax booked, in tax book status for years. Somebody bought it a few years ago. Even one was in tax book that I believe the neighbors over here said they had shipped in to keep it following. But I don't think anybody's, I don't think any owner of the property has actually cut it in ten years.
No, I don't think so either.
And you didn't hear from them at all? Obviously, they didn't do anything about it, but you didn't hear anything?
No, I've had conversations with the property owner over the years about contractors or people that would do it. And there are a few, but you can't. But I also recommend contractors, like, say, here's some contractors that do this. And there's at least two that have passed law, the names and number up.
I'll make a motion to declare nuisance and abate.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilor Beyond, so I don't know what you wrote down, Shannon, but.
It doesn't matter.
Whatever you wrote down goes. And I'm presuming with anything we've declared a nuisance with abatements, there won't be any kind of invoicing or anything until Larry's reviewed the language of the order and to make sure he's comfortable with the as-is. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. 115 Sixth Avenue North. I'm sure you're going to explain what the state of Minnesota hurts group is. That's the property owner you listed?
Yeah, it's one group or something like that. It's sort of kind of odd in the land record. Looks like they do make an attempt and an effort to keep it up. I think between the, between the two notices, I think it was long, it was cut, and it was long again. They just kept it there, so it's, it's. It is regularly mowed, it's not abandoned, but maybe not by the side of the schedule. This time of year, the grass isn't growing, growing new grass anymore, so that's kind of helping. Do you know, I think, what's the whole, though, unkept, I don't know if there's a whole lot that's pulled with the pole that's.
I just walked by it. My neighbor, it's way over.
Is it?
Yeah. Nothing's been done for a few, quite a few years.
So what would you like to do, council?
I would move that we declare nuisance and move to abate.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Councilor Beyond, supported by Councilor Berg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, 312 Fourth Avenue North. And we do have the property owner with us this evening. You want to address the counsel, Jonathan?
Yeah. I only ended up getting this three days ago, too. I didn't have much time, because I was painting my yard. I worked two different jobs, so it would be really nice to give this property a first step. I mean, for the cops, somebody. I made just a bit of an effort to hung all those ladders up on the one side of my garage. I will get one vehicle over there, but.
So what about the front?
The front. I picked up the topper that was there, I put it in the truck, I'll get licensed back on that truck, and probably start using it again, so.
You cannot park it in the front yard, though.
I'll start parking it all back then.
Well, I guess I would make a motion to give him until next month.
So it continues?
Continue.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Mimi, to continue this one until the next meeting. And Jeff's already been asked to kind of look at the delivery mechanism and make sure that we're doing this in a timely fashion.
Okay, continue your effort to get started.
Is a month going to work for you, Jonathan?
A month should be fine.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Yeah, thanks for coming, Jonathan. Two homeowners in one lane. Next one, 205 Third Avenue North.
I can tell you where all the vehicles are.
Where? Tell us.
Of all people, you should know.
Because I walk, or what?
Council, your wishes? I assume there's nobody here representing the homeowner.
Actually, why, there wasn't lawn grass on this one, that's been buried last summer.
Well, what's, what has been listed on the initial notice is taken care of, so. Regardless of if we're playing the game of moving things around in trade, but it's, but legally, we're, I think we're at a point where it's been.
Abated?
Abated, so.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that a motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilor Beyond, supported by Councilor Waller, to declare the problem as an abatement and dismiss the nuisance complaint. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I'm going to, anything else with the nuisance stuff before I close the hearing?
Can I make one comment on that?
Sure.
They just left it, unfortunately, but I don't think $300 is anywhere near an outrageous amount of money. If you've got to bring in a piece, you know, you activate a loader, you talk to any contractor on the planet. It's, you know, a skid steer right now with an operator's what? Yeah, I say it's 260 an hour, I think, last time I looked, is kind of the average. So I mean, that's, we've got to activate the city loader. I mean, that's not an outrageous, you know, claim. So maybe from a, maybe an up to kind of thing, I guess. I don't know how that would work, but just kind of thoughts as we review that, so.
Well, or if we have to bring a different company in to abate.
Right.
We have had to do.
Point taken. All right, at 6:41, I'm going to close the nuisance hearing and resume the regular meeting. We've all, that was the only, Simon, was the only scheduled presentation yet?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and council member reports. I'm going to mix it up, and we'll start with Councilor Beyond this one.
Okay. It's been brought up multiple times throughout the community about reevaluating the speed limits on Main Street, the approaches in and out of town, as well as pedestrian crossing lights. I know a lot of other communities, when they have a actual crossing, which I think down on the east end of town, it would be advantageous to, and I don't know if that would be an us thing, or if that would be a MinDOT thing, to look at something along that nature, so we actually have a, an actual crossing there. And then the handicap accessible parking in front of the post office, there's just kind of a sign there, still with no curb. I know we were still waiting on the, on the quote-unquote fix that MinDOT gave us. But I think we need to do something with a blue, blue painted parking spot, just so we, there's just a lot of confusion. And I think that with, with losing a parking spot because of the bump out, I think it's important to, you know, shift that maybe either one way or the other. And like I said, I don't know if that's because it's MinDOT's road, or if it's our main street. I guess I don't know how that is supposed to go, but that's something we should probably look at.
Jeff, is that the case, where the proverbial better to ask for forgiveness than permission, and just go ahead and paint it blue and?
I'll go paint it myself. I don't care. And tell the state to pound sand, I. Wouldn't be the first time I've done something like that, so.
Maybe you could consult with the city engineer as to which side of the sign the blue is supposed to be on.
Yeah, and we can look into this. I'm thinking it's probably something to the effect of it's on us to paint it, but we have to get their permission to.
That sounds like the state.
When we're sitting in August here, we've got too many meetings out and we're looking at, and out of the time to do anything. What do you want to do about coordinating meeting with MinDOT? Have we talked about maybe a site visit, or having somebody come up with? There probably should be some official request or something like that with MinDOT. There is, there's a kind of a mix of people that are in charge of this project. There's two separate projects out there, plus it's the whole order of, they're still working on the. They did the fix on the first project, the landscaping is a second project. We've had turnover in the MinDOT folks, so it's just kind of having a lot of turnover that the stuff they can kind of start to run here. But to get on track with.
I think we need to talk with them as soon as possible and do a walkthrough.
Yeah, you're talking about for some of the lights and some of the speed limits and most of it.
Everything.
Sidewalks.
A review of everything they did, yeah.
I'm trying to do a brief summary, Alex, but it's supposed to be cylinder, so.
I'll sort it out.
Thank you.
Well, and there's, like you said, there's been a lot of public input on speed limits, especially more so on the east side of town versus the west side. We've got the Highway Four turnoff, we've got the campground, Main Road, we've got the campground exit lane by the small parking lot there. And, you know, we've got people going by Brian's house over there at 50, 60 miles an hour on Eighth Avenue. It's definitely a problem, and it's definitely just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. So if anybody remembers about a year ago, I did a time study that if we were to decrease the speed limits coming in and out of town from the top of the railroad bridge that is, you know, another MinDOT, who knows when they're going to ever look at that, to Corky Hayden's place, and slowing down those ends would have added, I believe it was like 21 seconds to the travel time over that two-mile range. And like I said, I've gotten a lot of public feedback on that, and people wanting to see, especially turning off of Highway Four into town, turning off of Highway Four towards Giant's Ridge. And, I mean, people are, people are at 65-plus miles an hour hitting Highway Four already. Like, it's unbelievable.
People were swaying the basket.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's just a matter of time, so. You know, with that, I'm still not happy with MinDOT's fix of our main street. If you look across by the brown jug corner there, there's chunks of sidewalk that are caved in. And MinDOT just repaves the top of our, our street and says, oh, you're fixed, it's all done. Like, that's, that's just not acceptable to me. It's not acceptable to our citizens. And I don't know if we need a resolution from the council stating something like this nature, but that was what I would like to see.
Just real quick, and that's why I'm, just I think we should follow some official process or something. I know in the conversation that I had with MinDOT about the fix, which there's some concerns over the fix in the driving lane, which I'd rather address those as well. The folks that I talked to at MinDOT said that this project will not be touching the concrete, the sidewalk. They really don't think they meant that as we will not be doing anything with the sidewalk. They meant that as the crew that's coming in will not be doing that. But they didn't offer anything else upon what to do with both the sidewalks, so we should.
I think we need a comprehensive punch list.
Right.
If we're going to meet with them, including the speed limit. Although I suspect the people that we'd be meeting with probably aren't the speed limit people.
Right.
The research, I did some preliminary research after the last meeting, and everything I found that cities have done were not state highways when they adjusted the speed limit, so that, I'm not, I agree wholeheartedly with the proposal, but I've been warned that when it's a state highway, your, your ability to make them reconsider is somewhat compromised, but it doesn't mean we're not going to try.
Right, and.
And there is on like the installing, you know, signage or whatever. I think we've talked before, I had asked the question, is that did MinDOT put a highway through our city, or do we put a city on their highway? MinDOT is adamant that we put a city on their highway, so it just requires a permitting process. I know that it's approved 100% of the time, but don't, don't be too surprised when we do have to pull some permits to put up stuff with our own.
It's just, it's just a matter of doing it. That's, that's where I'm at. We can talk about it. We've been talking about it since last year. And we're two council meetings away from, you know, potential snowfall. So, you know, I mean, it's, if we're going to wait till another month and then another month, well, you might as well wait till next year. And it's, you know, it's just not acceptable.
I think Matt should reach out with his influence and try and set something up as quickly as possible.
Well, and along that same note, you know, we talked about the vegetation and the overgrowth of the vegetation. And we're still dealing with the certain lack, you know, I personally don't have any issue with visibility, but I can see where other people would. I mean, I'm in a truck, so I can't really, I'm not in a small car, but we've got a whole lot of vegetation on Main Street, that's, some of which is causing some visibility issues. And I don't think we need people jumping out there with a machete, stopping traffic and chopping it down. That's just not an acceptable way to handle that. But on the, on the, on the separate side, it's our responsibility to do something about it.
I got a question. So with all this being said, do we, so it's more formal, do we need a motion of some type to get this in, get going? Because it hasn't been, it's been, you know, talked about, but nothing's ever done. And council hasn't really said too much, except for Steve. Do we need a motion so that it, you have the okay to go forward on this?
Well, I guess I am folding it into what Matt is reaching out to, and I have to throw Matt another applause, but. Engineer to engineer is generally the way we do those. Is that, is the vegetation something to?
I think just add it to the list.
It needs to get taken care of, and I've heard, you know, we need a motion, and now we don't need a motion, so I'm questioning it.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I don't think.
That's right. I don't think we can, if it's not on the agenda, we can't take any action, as far as I know.
I think an agenda, or a motion will most likely be needed to officially convey our request to MinDOT. Maybe even resumely. our request to MinDOT, maybe even resolution, just to formalize it.
Would that be better after we've met with them, and-
I think after.
And then, if we're not satisfied with what they're proposing as a response, then we, we lay it out in a, in a resolution?
There, there is ultimately a, is there another name for the cooperative maintenance agreement, or is it just cooperative maintenance agreement? There's a maintenance agreement that goes into place, and, you know, one of the things that's kind of confusing there, sorry to interrupt, so one of the things that's kind of confusing on this project is, MinDOT is still doing their project, at the end of the project, we've got cooperative maintenance to do, that says, basically puts mostly maintenance on us. But if that needs to be reviewed, or we need to update that, then that would definitely require a motion or a resolution or something.
In the meantime, we could just give a direction to the city engineer, city administrator to meet, and discuss a punch list that you already- I think we will, we'll invite elected officials to participate in that as well. We may have to post a meeting, if need be. I think that'll convey our concerns, have that presence. And we keep cutting off Council Beyondance, it's-
You know what, it's valuable discussion on something I've been continually bringing up, so I'm perfectly okay with it.
It's your stage, and we keep cutting in the story about that.
Nope, that's, I, it's sharing information and, and doing what's right for the people's what's most important, so. Speaking of Main Street, every crosswalk on Main Street is still full of sand. And it's, it's, that's just unacceptable. I mean, if, I, I don't care if we have to get a broom and a shovel, that somebody, somebody that drives around town all day should care enough to say, hey, jeez, we should clean this up. There should be a little bit of pride in our community. And I have no problem volunteering and doing things, but I'm not gonna do things that we pay other people for. And on the, as long as I'm on the Main Street soapbox, all of these weed beds that we have out here, I'm not talking about the mulch with the plants, the areas that were supposed to be grass, that the grass never took, that our landscaping company says, well, that's not our responsibility, wasn't part of our contract, and here we are again with MinDOT saying, you know, well, that's your responsibility now. We should at least fill them in with concrete, 'cause they're just weeds, and they're not gonna grow grass, ever. And, you know, they, they just, they look terrible, so.
Should we ask the city engineer to get us the proposal to do that?
I think that might be something as well, I mean-
We'd have to go next year's budget.
No, right. And find out-
Right.
Why they didn't, and why this didn't grow grass like it was supposed to.
Right.
End of the day, if, if, if that's where we're at with-
Yeah.
city responsibilities, then we can get somebody to come and put concrete in there, whatever, but I think, I think, I'm making, I'm making notes of all of the stuff that you guys are talking about, and I'll bring it all up, and try to get the right people out of the lead, so that we can talk about all of these things at the same time, including the speed limits.
And we had left on board for some reason that was determined in twenty seventeen. We had purposely not forced those to accommodate, I don't know if there was talking about sowing trees or something, but there's-
Can't remember.
Yeah, I do remember the conversation, but I just remember what the answer was from there.
Well, trees and mulch would match, it wouldn't just look like a bunch of dandelions on our main street, so it'd be-
Well, then you could put turf there, that, you know, that lasts forever.
Yeah.
Never have to worry, concrete is very, very expensive.
That's true, true.
Yeah.
Do they still call it that?
Some, yeah.
I'll complicate that later. There was some reason why you're talking about it, I just-
Right.
And once again, we've hijacked Council Beyondance's list, sorry.
No, if it's productive conversation, I'm all in favor of it, 'cause it'll get something done. And then, you know, on that same thing, we've got, the landscape company had a two-year warranty. If you go by the post office, there's, you can tell there's plants missing, but next year, we're on our own for that, and we have zero information and zero plan of who's gonna take care of it, how we're gonna maintain it. So, that's, and like I said, we're two months away from a winter council meeting, so, I am an avid snowmobiler, so. One more thing about the east end of town, the, the trash can there by, by O'Neill's is kind of, if you look in there, if you throw something away, it'd be a good place for a dog waste station on the corner there.
You said you were looking for a place to put a couple of them.
That would be a fantastic place, if you look in that garbage can, it's definitely a, yeah, and maybe one or two along the trail as well. So, and then, let's see, I mentioned the sand on the, so, so the city hall steps and the ramp and the door are crumbling apart still. And if you look at the, you know, we, we have some money in our, and I don't remember what the, if it was ARP or one of those, Patty had brought it, or had it brought to the council about two months ago with some funding for that, for using that. Well, the I triple R B has a Public Works grant that would match it, and it, it goes for things like ADA, improving your city buildings and everything. So, we could literally be getting part of that money if we had a plan, you know, there's six million dollars in that I triple R B fund. And of course, grant applications, I believe, opened up August first. But, I, I mean, it, we're probably, like, again, we're probably too late in the year, but just that ramp, steps and door is probably about fifty thousand dollars. Well, if we could pay twenty-five for it, and get our, our ADA compliance in place, and not have a eyesore when you walk into our, our city government center, and have them pay for part of it, I think it'd be fantastic. The, you know, the website is still not updated, we have a new website with information that we, we need. Our strategic plan groups are all waiting on it, I've brought it up the last two months. Something's gotta happen with that. And I guess primaries are tomorrow in Minnesota, so get out and vote. Giant's Ridge is hosting a Rock the Ridge event this Friday, and it is free. So, I think it was, it's been a great event the last couple of years, so I'd encourage everybody to, to attend that as well. So, I think that is all I had on my list, which was gonna be short, but it didn't really work out, so.
Most of it was taken care of, I just want food for thought. Not saying things aren't justified, but with the Public Works, I want people, the council in particular, to think about, you know, years ago, we had eight or nine people in Public Works, and less area to cover. Now, we have four people and more area to cover. And so, I was asking the council to think about either contracting out, you know, some of these projects, like the Main Street will be one for next year, you know, taking care of the, the plants and stuff that maybe somebody's interested, excuse me, that would be interested in doing that, and maintaining, you know, the Main Street with all the plants and stuff, and have a knowledge of it. But I think we need to look at that, because four people, larger area, that's a problem. And we need to look at that and come up with some solutions on, on what we can do. So, I just want that, everything else I talked about in the meeting prior to, and then Steve did, so it's taken care of, so thank you.
You must be channeling Pam Burts, she was always, Pam always reminded us how, how big the crew was at one time, and plus, we had public utilities staff as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was, it's a difference in a smaller area, so the town always, you know, looked, looked relatively pristine, except I always heard complaints when I was on the council. I mean, I, you always get complaints, you know. I always say, well, then you know what, we have seats up here available to run, you know. But I, but I think it's a good point. You know, we have four people, bigger area, we have Giant's Ridge now, it's just bigger area to take care of. And I think we need to be fair at looking at this perspective of it.
Country Wall, well, you're done, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
Country Wall there.
Okay, Jeff, I'm wondering if you have an update on the street sweeper, when that might be coming for a visit?
Uh, they are working on do, going through and doing all the maintenance and checking. The salesmen at McQueen's, they do a thirteen-page intensive run-through. But in July, they were working on getting new equipment out the door and delivered. But in August, we'll have ours, where our guys go down there to, to check it out, and do the, you know, give it a once-over, and make sure that it's gonna work for us. They'll take them around, and show them how to use it, show them the capabilities, all that type of stuff. But that should be this month.
Okay, last, last I heard, I thought you said they were going to bring it up here and let us check it out up here. But we are going to have-
We have talked about them bringing it up here, where the, the guys are gonna go down there to use it down there, make sure it's-
Okay, so who will go down? I assume Lauren.
Lauren, I guess I'm not, I thought, who will go down?
So who has mechanical knowledge, just Lauren, or does somebody else?
I think they all have mechanical knowledge. Lauren's the mechanic, I don't know that I could rate how, how apt they are to, to do inspections.
Okay, well, so this month, we should hopefully know a yes or a no. Any news on the picnic tables for the park and the benches?
No, have you heard of any?
Those weren't part of one of yours?
No, we ordered them, so I didn't do a markup.
Right.
No, I'll check.
Okay, and then we've been talking about cameras for the town, and updating the council chambers here, where are we with that?
Uh, so with the council chambers, Steve Rock was gonna be in tomorrow to complete some stuff, I don't know what was, PCI was, but we're completing that, and then we'll be able to livestream and-
What a terrible job, though.
For remaining on YouTube and all that stuff. On the street cameras, so I'm gonna get another proposal on that. I believe that Gilbert's moving forward with the Mercata proposal, some of that may come over here, but I'm not sure, but I'll get those proposals for September.
So you have a couple companies that you're going to check into?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's a bit too far, but we talked, the camera project had kind of melded with, like, the door lock project. Are you looking for full, or option A and B, if you wanna-
I guess it'd be smart to get option A and B. So then we, then we'll have the information.
Spoken like a true budget committee person.
Yeah. And then, the council has not received your meeting schedule, since like June tenth was the last time I received one, and we have like no follow-up after you have your meeting, so, I mean, I don't even know if you're on vacation, or you're working, I have no idea what your schedule is. So I just, I just feel there's really a lack of communication there. So, I, I would like to be better informed, I don't know how others feel.
Yeah, and I'll start those up again, I think those Monday emails are probably gonna be Friday emails, just a little work better.
Okay, and to kind of wrap up your week, so we know what's going on.
And what's coming.
What's coming, yeah.
No, I mean, a Monday, a Monday email about Monday morning meetings just doesn't really work well, for a while, they're gonna kind of stack it up, so Monday was getting pretty tight, so, those suck a lot of Fridays.
Well, and then I've heard a rumor that the city is going to take over the cemetery, and then Kathy made a little bit of a comment there tonight, so can you update us on something there?
Uh, yes, we have been talking about, and, I don't know if I'm gonna take over, although I, I don't know if that's necessarily incorrect either.
Well, can I interject? Can I interject?
If you'd like.
Yeah, to keep it short, yeah, 'cause we're gonna wait till next month. But, we, research has been done, all the way back till nineteen thirty-five with records, and so, yes, we've had meetings with Shannon, who's on the board, Larry, who's the attorney of course, Jeff, myself, and Chiver. And so, we were going to talk about it the next meeting, because two resolutions need to be made. It's all legal and up a board, everybody on the cemetery board is along with it. So we were just gonna wait until next month, because, you know, there's no sense repeating things, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm wondering if there should be a public hearing on it, if we're taking over, like, it's something that's going to cost the city something, so I'm wondering if that's something that there should be a public hearing about, or if that's just a council decision.
I think I can speak to that.
Thank you.
The research that was done back to nineteen thirty-five, in fact, back to eighteen ninety-eight, was done by me going through some records, which wasn't the one that-
Talking, you, you did the research in nineteen-
No, I, I was on the council in nineteen eighty-nine, yeah.
You carry it well.
Same year, there was something different about you.
Think you'd be retired by now.
I'm sorry.
The research was how we're operating in the present time, and whether it's pursuant to statute. And there was some transfers made back in nineteen thirty-five, which Kathy was talking about, that made it a little bit difficult, continued to run the way we were running. And so, there's gonna be a recommendation at the next council meeting, as I understand it, and I'll be giving my research back from nineteen, nineteen, eighteen ninety-eight. But, there is, it's a process, and I think the process is being agreed to by the Cemetery Association, and by the city council, and will be in front of the council on this September meeting.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to bore you with all the research right now, but it has been voluminous.
But there will be financial information also for the budget committee?
Yeah, 'cause you'll understand the, the history of it, what's not been done right for ninety years, which I still giggle over. And, and, but the, I wanna make it clear that the cemetery board has done an excellent job. It has nothing to do with, with their work at all. It has to do with, the question, the reason I got involved is, is, oh, the city owns the cemetery land, but there's always a question mark at the end of the statement. So, Larry did the research, 'cause Shannon gave him the, the records clear back to that time, he did the research, and so we've got it all lined up, dot, da, 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 da. I mean, every little duck follows the number of the duck, I'm telling you.
Okay, and Larry, you're confident that it does not have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was my question.
But the council could, I mean, when we're presented with information next month, we may decide that that's what, how we wanna approach it.
Sure.
It's always the council's prerogative.
It's a sensitive issue, cemetery's always been a sensitive issue, and so, we've, you know, and I've been particularly careful to be considerate of people's feelings.
And then Jeff, I, I was up at Voyager's Retreat a couple weeks ago, and it has not been mowed up there this year, and I'm just wondering, are you getting complaints about that?
Um, no.
Did you, not, did-
Did you just, did, what was the most recent you were up there? 'Cause it, there should have been ditch mowing by now.
Well, it's mowed by the signs and stuff. I mean, it was, it was a couple weeks ago that I was up there, yeah, but the ditches weren't mowed. But I think they have a caretaker that takes care of their signs, right?
Yeah, so there is a mix of stuff that the city takes care of, and that the association takes care of. The ditches should have been mowed by contractor by now, which I can check on. Make sure I was talking with the H O A president today, so I could follow up on that. And then there's some other work that needs to be done up there, kind of storm-related stuff, that we're working on, and kind of talk with, that with the engineer a little bit, that's kind of getting in the way of some of the other mowing stuff, but-
So you're in commi- communication with the H O A president?
Yes. And that makes perfect sense that it wasn't a couple of weeks ago, but it should be by now, so I'm okay.
Okay, so that's being contracted out, our Public Works is not doing that?
Yeah, we did, to do that ditch mowing requires a piece that we don't have.
Right.
I did suggest buying the side mower for the toolcat, so-
Yeah, I couldn't find, I couldn't find that information that you sent, because that's what, if you wanna send it to me again, because we're working on the budget for next year soon, so. And then I wanted to thank Tracy for her report, it's always so positive, which is really nice. And Baca, your flocking fundraiser, was just so successful. I mean, everybody, like, loved it, so I wanted to congratulate you on that, too. And that's all I have.
Council Bird?
Getting back to what Steve said for about twelve months, this council chambers, and I've been hearing the excuse from Steve Rock for about nine months. I keep hearing that he's busy with the ski season. Well, in another two months, ski season will be here, and we'll go back to that same excuse. So I'm hoping he'll get this done before the next meeting. His excuses are getting old on that one. The fire hydrant on the end of third's still got the black bag, has there been anything on fixing that? And the black bag is shredded, so it's, it doesn't do any good.
I brought four of them to Sherry in the office to bring to Public Utilities on the thirty eighth, huh?
To cover them.
Well, to, to fix the darn things. I did just talk to, but right the day before I left for my trip, so.
What's the stand?
No, no, that's, so that's the update. I know, that's, so that's the update I have, is that it was, went through Sherry to, uh, to People Service to take care of our hydrants.
That's as far as I got, so...
Can we put a little pressure on them to get it done?
Many, many months.
There's four of them. There's two up at Voyagers and then two on the south side of town.
I think there's at least three in town.
Did, the water in the parks, that been taken care of?
No, it hasn't been trenced in yet. It's gotta be, uh, it was not gonna be trenced in. It's prepped, it's under the path and everything.
It's snowing a couple of months, we keep saying. Uh, another thing, I was over at the Fireman's Olympics, ninety degrees, these people participated. I wouldn't wanna put that gear on. They did a fantastic job. Are we doing any storm drain work, like in the alleys, like, like you showed me a picture in my alley? Is that, are we doing any work?
We haven't documented it yet, but there's a few that we do need to dig.
Because I think when the Public Works combine with their pull-in winter, it will be a much bigger expense than what we anticipated. That's all.
Thank you. I think most things have been covered. I know, I think it was in July, Counselor Beyondage went to a workshop that the I triple R B put on about all their grant programs. And in communicating with I triple R B staff after that, uh, trying to get a cop, copies of the, the PowerPoint, which they, they did send me. They'd extend, uh, the I triple R B staff, Whitney extended a invi- invitation or an open willingness to come and do a presentation for the city council. So we could schedule a, a work session. I, I don't wanna try and work it into a, the council meeting that, then we will match the loose seven hour meeting. And I don't think we wanna attempt that, but, uh, is anybody opposed to having a work session with the I triple R B to kind of get a re, uh, an overview of all their, uh, their different programs? And they've, they've done some changes to some of their programs, too. So even if you've worked with the I triple R B in the past, and the city certainly has, you can't make the assumption that the programs are the same that they were. So is everybody willing, if we can work with Whitney to put together, uh, some sort of workshop? I, I know Steve's been through it, so he, he gets an exemption, but the...
I'll take the day off work.
So unless somebody's actively opposed, I, I will reach out to Whitney and Jeff and I will try and schedule something as a work session for the council. I think that would be helpful for us. Because, and see, you already pointed out that there are some programs that we could take advantage of. There's a number of programs that we could take advantage, of course, every one of them requires time into a grant application, but, uh, there's some, some great opportunities there. Uh, with that, I'm going to attempt to keep us moving. We have a bunch of new business. I don't see any old business listed yet, so I'm taking that as there isn't any. All right, hold on to your hats, folks. Item nine A, new business, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash eleven, authorizing an application to the I triple R residential redevelopment grant program. I think as Jeff pointed out, the, the city actually has to be the applicant on behalf of the homeowner. Heather, you wanna add to what's in our pack?
A pretty straightforward application. This is a, this is a good program.
Support.
Been moved by Counselor Bird, supported by Counselor Beyondage to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Do we have roll call today, Shannon?
Counselor Bird?
Yes.
Waller?
Yep.
Nimi?
Aye.
Addit?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried and the resolution is adopted. Item nine B, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twelve dash one-two, accepting a donation, as Jeff pointed out in our agenda setting meeting. It is a statutory requirement that cities take action to accept donations, and that we, we can't just pocket it.
Oh, move it, thank you.
Support.
Moved by Counselor, uh, Bird, supported by Counselor Waller. And I suspect the, the city administrator is open to some suggestions for how the money might be spent. I wrote down park our ball fields, but there, I'm sure everybody else has got lots of suggestions. Uh, any further discussion on the, the motion? Shannon, when you're ready.
Counselor Bird?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Nimi?
Aye.
Aye.
Addit?
Aye. Uh, motion is carried, the resolution has been adopted. Item nine C, approval of change order number one, the Pavilion Park path. Uh, Matt kind of covered this in our earlier meeting as to what this is all about. If there's more information that you would like from him, this is your opportunity. If not, I guess a motion would be in order.
Some of...
Support.
Moved by Counselor Waller, then second and third is by Counselor Beyondage and Nimi. Shannon can make the follow with her expertise, she hears better than I do. Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Item ninety, approval to request to increase the Pavilion cleaning service fee.
I had the other one in...
Oh, sorry, did I miss one?
No, I had it in the wrong spot.
Ms. Evans and Ms. Newton have requested the increase from twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour.
I'll make a motion to increase their pay to twenty-five dollars an hour.
Support.
I do have a question. Do you know how many hours you've been cleaning?
Well, Shannon has all that. It depends on how busy the Pavilion is, of course. July was pretty busy, August just slower. So it depends. It depends on how bad they left it. You know, it's, it, it varies too much. And I forget to send a little copy of our lower standard. Put Shannon hazard.
Okay, so, um, do you usually only go in after events, or do you clean?
Well, we, we go in after events, and then if it's been a while, we go and spoof it up at the next event, just to be sure of things. And we have gone in there, and people have been in there that are done any schedules, so we don't know if that's all over.
And left a mess.
And left a mess, yeah.
Oh, wow. So, um, you were going to come up with like a, a, a cleaning schedule? Like such and such to be done monthly, such and such to be done every three months? Have you done that?
No, for that.
Oh.
So I'm only gonna count everything, and that's coming up. We'll give a good cleaning every fall, and screw that kind of stuff. What else would you want? Yeah, and important areas.
Well, just like the deep cleaning. I guess if you could just kind of give that schedule to Jeff, so then we know, so then we can budget, and if you have any idea of how many hours it would take to do that? Um, like, you know, cleaning the stove and fridger- refrigerators and, you know, just things like that.
Well, we clean the fridge every time, and the stove. The oven, we have tried, it's really hard on which to try to clean, we've tried everything, so... Easy up, home down scrubbing, it's really hard one of them.
Oh, so maybe Jeff needs to talk to the person...
And we can't find the book on it.
Oh, I remember, it used to be on the counter, right? Or you can get a book online, probably. Can you look into that, Jeff?
Yes, I can picture that. Okay, I might be able to try it down.
Okay, good, all right, yeah. I, we asked Public Works, they didn't know where it was either, so...
Just to clarify, the motion would be to be effective immediately?
Um, yes. That's all the, all the discussion I have.
Did we have a second? I apologize. Okay, Shannon got it.
Um, yeah, Kathy.
Any further discussion?
Um, I guess just one other thing, if we can look back at the data, then we will know what we should budget for next year. At the increase.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
I did predict that it, you probably are being underpaid.
Yeah, we have loved the...
I, I won't open my big mouth again, though. All right, item nine E, approval of fire department EMS hire. As Jeff noted, uh, the Personnel Committee, I stepped, stepped in. On behalf of Counselor Beyondage, uh, we entered, uh, interviewed Michelle LaForsen, and she had a nice interview. And so, uh, I will make the motion to proceed with the hire, if somebody wants to support it.
I'll support it.
Counselor Don supports.
I do have a question. Is she EMT certified now, or will she be going through training?
She is.
She is? Oh, wow, that's great.
She wasn't, uh, sure about the, the fire. I think it's something she'd like to do eventually, but she seemed to... Want to hold off on that and just start with EMT? But I, I know Chief Mackey will keep his eyes open for an opportunity to recruit her for the fire department. Uh, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item nine F, uh, the Personnel Committee also interviewed Josh Christensen-Petersen for the vacant EMS captain position. Recommend that as well, I'll make that motion.
Support.
Supported by Counselor Waller. Known Josh since he was in junior high.
So Jeff, is there money in the budget to cover this position for this year?
Yes, yeah, uh, Chief Mackey put us together and budgeted for still opposite positions.
Any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I'm sorry, Brian, are you here representing the department, or?
No, I'm just here...
Just hanging out.
But I do support. We need more, so if you know anybody that wants to join, run for our way.
All right, nine, item nine G, uh, declaration of surplus property. Again, as Jeff outlined in the earlier meeting, this is a statutory requirement to do, for a city to divest of any kind of property. Uh, Jeff, anything you wanted to add to this?
I don't feel, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, declare the three items listed as surplus property.
Moved by Counselor Don, supported by Counselor Bird. Any further discussion?
Of course I have further discussion.
Of course.
Okay, we were, um, talking about taking care of the plants on Main Street next year. And I don't know, it had come up that maybe that Ford pickup should be retained to, like, carry the water? Like, to get a big water, whatever you would call it.
Well, it's got a manual transmission, so I, I was in favor of that, too, tell they, they said.
Plus, you could, you could probably sell this for quite a bit of money. Those older, you know, I looked at one recently, it was twenty-five grand.
Oh, wow.
Um, we could buy quite the small little, uh, side-by-side rig with a watering tank in the back for that kind of money, so...
So do we want to, like, what would we want for minimum bid? Is that something we should decide as a council, or?
The council could decide that. I know that Chief Mackey talked about the fifteen as a minimum bid.
Yeah, I didn't know what shape it's compared to when I looked at, but...
It's, it is highly sought after, um, that, that make it model truck and that particular truck, uh, both are, there's a lot of interest in them. So the council could do a minimum that they like, or...
If, if the city wasn't, or the fire department wasn't happy with the, the bids, they could withdraw it and reopen it, could they not?
And, and this money's going to go into the general fund?
Uh, so, yes and yes. Uh, so we're going to the general fund, we've, we've spent money towards the, the twenty twenty-four, uh, where this was intended to handle that. Between the sale of the two thousand five F five fifty and this one, then that would cover, more or less, I can give the, the accounting, but covers, more or less covers the new purchase.
Okay, that's what I, I thought I recalled, Matt. Okay, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Hearing now, I sense you're ready to vote. Call in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine H. This isn't really an action item per se, uh, but, uh, as Jeff noted, uh, this came up at the, at our last meeting about, uh, having a conversation about ordinance enforcement. So here it is. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Jeff?
Um, just a space for the council to, to discuss that. Uh, Chief Teacher is, he's on vacation this week, um, so he's not available to, to take part. And it is just not as a discussion, there's some people that we don't have to report. But this will be time for the council to share any thoughts on that.
Well, um, I know this is something I've wanted to discuss. I think most of our ordinances, you are responsible for enforcement, is that correct? Besides, like, the parking?
Are you tabulating them?
Uh, well, I, I, I don't wanna steal the, steal the attorney's thunder. But our ordinance for the most part by a violation would be a misdemeanor, which would require either a police officer to write the citation, or the attorney to, uh, issue a complaint and handle the prosecution. Administratively or, or desk-wise, uh, it would apparently be a zoning ordinance or something like that would come to my desk, but I, um... Not trying to give you your own answer, but it's, I, I would be the one that would review it, but I don't really have any enforcement authority, like, uh, like law enforcement or like the city attorney would.
Well, I, I guess one of the questions I had was, um, the short-term rentals. I thought that when we pass that ordinance, it said the administrator would be the person to enforce it. So that is not correct?
I'm the one that handles the registrations and handles complaints and stuff, but again, when it comes down to it, I don't have the ability to issue...
Okay, so it would be Larry? So, so one of the questions I have, are, are the lodge and the villas, are they registered as short-term rentals for Biwabik?
No, are short-term rental licensing applies to, uh, in residential zones? They're part of the Giants Ridge P U D. It was all, it was all approved as one big development years ago. So it's not in that zoning classification that requires them to do that.
Okay, and what about it, Voyagers, have those people been registering that have the short-term rentals up there?
Uh, yes, I think we're up to five now, um, and that. So for those, I get Voyagers, which is where we have our residential, uh, short-term rentals. Uh, they have to fill out the stuff with us, that requires them to actually put their, with the Department of Health license as well. So we review that. I believe the lodge and, and those properties have to have that, that licensing from the Health Department, but we're not involved. So they would still, they would still follow the regulations. But for us, you only register with us if it's in a residential zone.
Okay, and what about in town here now? So the ones on Main Street don't have to register with you? And why not? I mean, they're not any safer if they're on Main Street or if they're in a neighborhood?
The, the impetus for the short-term rental ordinance was the new thing brought on by Airbnb and BRBO and all that type of stuff. With this popping up in residential areas, so there's things, the, the reason for the zoning is that you wouldn't necessarily want business activities or lodging in a residential zone. So we, we zone Main Street commercial with the intent that that would have those commercial activities, so restaurants, bar, gas station, whatever. So it just goes with the zoning. The reason we have the short-term regulations is to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand, it doesn't, you know, isn't a, an annoyance or a burden or too much on the neighbors in the residential zones. So that's why they license with us. Again, the ones on Main Street, they would have the same, the state regulations that they'd have to follow for, you know, say, D U and stuff and all that type of stuff. But the reason the city is regulating it is so it doesn't get out of hand and take over and have negative effects in the residential areas.
But there's nobody right now say, telling the one, the operators on Main Street that they need to have this, um, license or whatever? The health, the Health Department inspection or...
Are you asking if we're making them aware that they need the state licensing, or?
Well, or, or are they? Are they licensed at all?
We don't verify that, I guess is the, is the answer. No, we don't.
Okay.
I have no reason to believe that they're not, but no, we don't verify that they have those.
So then...
And we don't enforce that there either, that's the state enforcement.
So then they could be, if they're not licensed, then they wouldn't have to be paying the lodging tax? There would be nobody... So then they could be, if they're not licensed, then they wouldn't have to be paying the lodging tax, there would be nobody, no way to trace that?
Well, so the ordinance would still apply, they would, they would, they would have to, but the enforcement and the tracking would be, would be difficult. Which it is regardless, I mean, we don't, since they don't submit that to us, they submit it to Evolip as a fiscal agent.
When you say the ordinance would apply, you mean the lodging tax ordinance, not the short-term rental ordinance?
Yes, the lodging tax ordinance says that if you rent short-term rentals, you have to submit the 3% tax over to Evolip for that, through the Bureau. Even if you were hypothetically or theoretically illegally renting short-term, on a short-term rental license, you technically still, you should legally still submit that 3% lodging tax. Enforcement of that is tricky because of the non-public nature of the data. We do put that on Evolip to do the enforcement of that, I'm not exactly sure how far they go and what they have at their disposal to investigate or to follow up on those. And again, I'm not, I'm not aware that there's, that there's any that aren't, or that's widespread, but I don't have verification of it.
See, I guess one thing that bothers me about our ordinance is it's like, we're not enforcing many of them, or they're not enforced consistently. And it's almost like, people don't think they have to follow the rules of Biwabik because things aren't enforced consistently. I mean, the Blight ordinance is a prime example, we had how many tonight, plus you have how many that still have to be looked at next month. And then the parking, I mean, it's a state law that you have to park with the flow of traffic. I mean, we've got campers parked against traffic that have been parked for way more than 48 hours, and it's almost like, I guess I just get frustrated with it, I mean, people say things to me, and I say, I bring it up all the time, but nothing is ever done about it. I mean, you're not supposed to park for more than 48 hours, there's a boat that's been parked on Eighth that has a bag of sand under its wheel that's been there all summer. There's another one that has flat tires that they just keep airing up, it never moves, and I don't know what we can do about it. The sign ordinance, which people are supposed to come up to City Hall and get a permit for a sign, while we have an example on Main Street that he never came and got a sign and nothing's ever, you know, a sign permit, and nothing's ever been done. He did, altered his building, and did not get a building permit, and nothing was done. We have a business that has a banner, that has four banners that have been up for years, and banners are supposed to be up for 14 days, and that's it, and they're supposed to get a permit. So I guess I'm just like, I get really frustrated that it's not, they're not enforced. And I don't know how anybody else on the council feels, if they feel it's important to enforce our ordinances or not, or if it should just be a free-for-all.
I agree with Patty. You know, she's brought it up multiple times, I've concurred with her multiple times. Then my question is, what is bothering you as a city administrator with the, or enforcing the ordinances? I mean, what is it that you have problems with, like the banners, okay? That, that's real clear, 14 days, and you take those babies down, you know? There should, there should be no issue with it, you know, and it seems to be a relatively easy thing compared to some of the others that she brought up, but they still are not enforced, I mean, I think she has good points.
And enforcement of the ordinance is such a broad topic, it's hard to give just a, you know, a single answer on it. On the sign ordinance, that has come up, business owners have come before the council in the last year or so. And the council didn't really give a definitive yes or no on it, but the consensus was kind of the planning, the planning commission was reviewing the zoning ordinance, and they would be possibly updating that so that the council wasn't looking for strict enforcement on that, they can certainly change that. And then there's, again, it's hard to give just a single answer on it. Like, the sign ordinance could be something that goes up without notice, so that, you know, fix for that would be a regular, a weekly or a bi-weekly check or a scan of the businesses. I mean, I could tell you there's, I mean, it's not real often, but there are, there are stretches where the only, the only part of Biwabik I really see is the drive-in and the inside of my house, so I'm not necessarily, we can put in rounds of inspections or ask the department to take a look at that. The parking also, that's come up with kind of varying council feelings on how tightly doing force that or not, there's...
Well, I got a question, can I interrupt? Like, when she's talking about the boats on the street, good grief, you know, why are they, I mean, we just went over some of these pictures and were complaining about driveways and parking vehicles multiple, and yet we leave the boats on the street for months. You know, pumping up the air tire, putting sandbags on them when they shouldn't even be there, and we do, we do nothing. So my question is, is it, are you waiting for a motion, or are you waiting for something that be taken care of, or how do we go about this?
Just if I can come to Jeff's defense here a little bit. There's three different ways that you enforce ordinance. One is like a sign ordinance. We don't take him to court, go over there and kind of administratively take the thing down, whatever it is, the banner, the sign, whatever. The next thing is a traffic ticket, which is usually done by parking violation, or four parking violations. And that's done by the police department. Short-term rentals, if somebody's renting short-term up in voyagers and we don't know about it, they get away with it. We have to, Jeff has to be able to be told that, police department has to be told that. Somewhere that we have, there's a lot of this, this is kind of some excuse, which is a lot of it because we don't know what's going on. I don't know if Jeff knows that this boat trailer has been parked for 48 hours or more. Somebody has to bring it to his attention, or he has to find out about it somewhere, then we have to decide how it's going to be administered and enforced. My recollection was, at the last meeting, we discussed the vehicles being parked in the street, and I'm not trying to throw the police department under the bus here, but I recall Ty acknowledging that, and they were going to follow up. And we don't have Ty here tonight to find out what happened with that.
That would be specifically a parking violation that would be enforced by a ticket or a citation.
Well, and the police, I mean, they drive around town, I don't know how many times a day that they're making, and they, I mean, I would assume they would notice that a vehicle hasn't moved for weeks, you know? I mean, we had one up by the skate park there, and I don't know, it was there at least three weeks, if not longer. And then pretty soon they covered the license plates with paper, and it's like, and I talked to Ty about it, and he said, yeah, I'm aware of that. And it's like, well, then why is it still there, why is it not ticketed? It's, you know, been there for, you know, weeks, and then I think they finally did take care of it.
I remember the last meeting, you told the police department or the police chief, you get a little tighter on the enforcement, as I recall anyway.
So I think maybe, I don't know, who should be the one to tell them, to enforce consistently is a thing also, you know?
To tell the police department, it would be from the council.
So do you think we need to have a resolution telling them that we want our parking ordinances enforced?
That's kind of what I don't know if it was a resolution or a motion last week, last month rather.
I don't, I don't know if we did a motion, I think we just kind of directed him.
I think it was a consensus.
Yeah, so you feel we need a motion, Larry? So you want to put it on the agenda for next month?
We can't do it tonight, no.
No.
Yeah, when, when Chief Teacher's here, we can kind of discuss that a little more. My guess is that the details are long and boring, I do, there was a truck that was parked up by the skate park, that I know Ty was put, Chief Teacher was putting a lot of time and effort into, but I don't know what that was all about. There was something.
Well, and I think even as far as the sign ordinance, I mean, businesses might not know that you need to have a permit. You know, you need to have a permit to put up a banner, and you can only have it for two weeks. So I think like if they come up to have their utilities hooked up, or change utility names, that there should be something that the businesses can be aware of what the ordinances are that they need to adhere to.
So did we get a music in the park permit to put that in the gazebo, because we have a banner on city property that's been there all summer long? Pretty hard for us to crack down on people that have, I can understand if things are right, you know, there's a thing called officer discretion. When it comes to a police officer, they pull somebody over, they're doing 32 miles an hour in a 30, they give a warning, they go on with their day, you know, and it's called officer discretion, there's not a law enforcement officer in the country that hasn't used that. And the same thing with like, I believe, like the banner ordinance. If, and we talked about this with the business owners, and I have a very big problem with, we can sit here and preach, we want business, we want business, we want business, and then now you gotta, you know, Miller Lite's going to give you a sign that says, welcome hunters, well, now I gotta come in and get a permit from the city, and then I gotta go put it up, gotta take it down 14 days later before hunting season's over. Like, that, to me, that's ridiculous, and that's just going to waste a whole bunch of our time. However, if you've got a banner that's been up for a year and a half and is tattered and torn and looks like garbage, yeah, then we should probably go over and take something about it, but officer discretion should also transfer to our discretion. Ordnances are there to enforce if we need them, and that's just my opinion. And I don't, I don't want to see flat tire vehicles sitting on a street all day long, and nobody does, but that's up to the law enforcement to, that's up for law enforcement to just ticket that, in my opinion. I mean, you look at our ordinances online here, the last thing I can read about when it was codified last, I have no idea. I think it was, the last thing that says anything about codification was 1976, I wasn't even born yet. And that's what I'm trying to, you know, and I've brought up codification many times, I don't know how you can, we can talk about ordinances when nothing is up to date to begin with.
Well, the newest ordinances are the fence ordinance, the sign ordinance, well, and then the rental ordinances. And I'm not sure, those are the ones that I know we worked on, and the nuisance ordinance, which I think that, obviously by having so many people in here tonight, and the ones coming up, the nuisance ordinance needs to be looked at, or we need a nuisance committee or something, because Jeff is spending way too much time, I think, on enforcing nuisances. I think that that could be handled differently.
And then there's, he and I spent, I don't know, I don't know, we drove every alley and every street one day, and that's, that's a flip coin, I mean, some of them, we came up with, I kind of forget, about 30 properties that are questionable, okay? It isn't just black and white all the time, and it's not, and that's the problem with the nuisance ordinance. And then I, years, well, not years ago, but whenever, they had it where the police were doing it, and you had a whole chamber full of people. I mean, you can't have it both ways, and so it's, you know, when he and I did it, I mean, it was discretion. So he had a little nickname that we had for the 30 properties, you know, because it was questionable, and it didn't quite go over to the nuisance, but it was like, eh, you know, it's questionable. Now, somebody else could have looked at it and said, oh, that's, that's breaking the nuisance ordinance. But it's not so easy when you go out there, and he and I did, we spent a lot of time going up and down those streets and alleys, looking.
And I think Jeff's time can be used better, like writing grants or things like that, instead of.
Were you suggesting hiring someone to hire to do it?
Or have a board, or a committee.
And then you're going to get, just, just, for some, think about three different ideas of what a nuisance is. I mean, this discussion's been beaten to death, and it's hard, I mean, that one ordinance is just hard, in my opinion.
And it is really hard, but that's what, I just don't feel that that's the best use of Jeff's time, when he has so many other things to do, I don't know. I mean, this is just a discussion, so I guess everybody can kind of just process things and see what they think.
And I do see, from the wrong side here, that I do check out, there are vehicles that I'm sure have not moved. And then there's always somebody that comes in with a ticket while they were warming the vehicle up, or they were unloading the groceries, or something like that, and then while I was, it was, I was only there for five minutes while you were there, you were on the wrong side of the street for the five minutes when the cops are looking, people on the wrong side of the street. So, and I'm not dismissing it, but you know, everything in between there and finding that sweet spot can, you know, can kind of hurt part. We do get, and this is just one example of something that comes up with ordinances, we discussed this before. No parking, no parking in the, not parking in the same spot for 48 hours is intended to combat people parking their vehicle and they get there all summer. Not to get a ticket at 48 hours and five minutes, so, you know, but it's there to give us something to do. People can and do occasionally play the game of, okay, on hour 47, we back it up three feet. You know, and then you get into those games. There is, there used to be, it used to be a common practice, we didn't do a lot of it, but the chalking the tires to see if it had moved.
They can't do that anymore.
Supreme Court cases, or some case law that you can't do that, so, then in other words, you gotta take a picture of it to have points of reference and stuff like that.
Or mark it on your GPS.
And, you know, like, like most things, it's five, 5% of the issues take up 95% of the time. And like I said, I really don't want to be dismissive of the ordinance enforcement topic, but it is so, you know, so unique to whatever that ordinance is at that time, that it's hard to just give a blanket answer.
I think it would be helpful if you could convey to Ty, the discussion about parking vehicles for extended periods was, came up again this evening, I'm not begrudging any of the information, but he should expect to have a conversation about it at the September meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion, if there was some law, I know that's not an excuse, I've heard that saying before, but would it, when we have a letter in with our light bill, if maybe we just remind people that parking vehicles in the wrong way is against the law, or the 48 hours, or parking your boats or your campers is a nuisance, or whatever, and just inform the people what the ordinance is, because maybe they don't know it.
Trouble with that is that there's so many ordinances that you're in the public utilities notice bill, it's going to take parcial force to get everybody. I mean, we do have a certain amount of conversation here about officer discretion, council discretion, city administrative discretion as to what we, what we learn about. I don't mean to belabor this, but there are three different ways to take care of ordinance, and they're all individual. And I don't mean to be smart, but one notice in a public utility notice is going to, I'm sorry. I'm drafting the next city newsletter, at least an outline for it, and I can certainly work something into it, parking, although it could go on for three pages just talking about parking, but I'll have to use Counselor Waller as my editor for that section. Just in the interest of time, I, I think we've had a good discussion, and if the council is so inclined, we can have this on the agenda again next month. But I'd just like to keep the flow moving here, and I am going to, yet again, see if the Charter Commission Chair objects, exercise a little discretion, I want to move aye to the, to the end of the new business, just so.
I want, I want to move I to the, to the end of the new business, just so we can, we've got some actual business to transact, and I as another discussion. And I, you're not billing us hourly, are you, Matt?
I'm not billing at all.
You should've said yes. So I'd like to...
I got a hard time believing that.
We'll, we'll come back to item I in, in just a couple of minutes, but I wanna do these, the things that were added to the item, are, are to the agenda, starting with approval of change orders to recreation area. We discussed this in the earlier meeting. Anything to add, or any questions the council might have for Matt, or something you wanted to say that you forgot?
I'll under.
So there were, there were three change orders?
Yes.
Just for the, the clarification for the council. Counsel, what are your wishes? And this is all within the grant money that we have.
And you're looking for approval?
I'm looking for a motion to approve the three change orders for recreation area.
I'll make a motion to approve. Support.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Nimi, supported by Counselor Waller. Is there any further discussion? And I know this was sort of a last minute addition, so I understand if anybody's hesitant about, about this. Since you're ready to vote, all in favor of the, of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Item, yeah, I guess we skipped K, didn't we? Okay. Approve pay application number two for the recreation area. Again, Matt discussed this in the agenda meeting. Counselors, any questions or concerns that you would have?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
Been moved by Counselor Nimi, supported by Counselor Waller, to approve the pay application number two for the recreation area. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item M, approve request for funding for the Bavarian theme. Counselors, and the city has received a proposal to do a workup of what Main Street might look like with a fully implemented Bavarian theme. Is this coming through BACA? Is that the channel here, or the SD group, or...
Well, it's a subcommittee within SD two.
And the request is to, for a contribution or an outlay by the city for five thousand dollars. Jeff, do you want to add anything to that, or is there somebody else who wants to elaborate?
Again, your apologies, it was a nice, I got missed you last week to look through, and I kinda missed the attachment also here. But this did come through the Bavarian theme committee as a, it's too much for them, kind of as an effort to kind of reinvigorate and restart the Bavarian theme and the interest in the Bavarian theme. There's probably a case of people don't necessarily know what they, that they have to follow it, or just exactly what it is, so it's kind of like, kind of an educational piece where I say it.
And then was, is there something, do we have to make a motion before we can discuss?
That's Robert's rules.
I'll make a motion that we accept this contract for the SD two.
Motion by Counselor Waller, is there support, so we can discuss?
I will support.
Support of the council, thank you. Okay.
Okay. So there may be either grants or low interest loans that business could, could access, is that right, or?
Yeah, so there, there, so we do have a low interest loan program for Bav, well, yeah, for Bavarian theme stuff. It's been kind of stated and repeated over and over that we're not able to do grant distributions out of that because of some ITRB regulations, of which I don't have anything in writing in my office in that, and in the ITRB staff that the mayor and I talked to over the summer, they had no, no recollection of that, and I don't know if it's courtesy willingness to, or eagerness to use it as such. And the fund is what we have, that we, we've loaned out to, to Main Street businesses for renovation.
And there is still money in that fund?
Yes. Yeah, there's active, active payers, active borrowers that are, that are paying back bills.
Okay. And, and I wanted to say, I did, I talked to Aaron about this, and I think we had talked about it at the Budget Committee a little bit, and thought maybe we could put twenty-five hundred in this year's budget and twenty-five hundred in next year's budget if it is approved, so it doesn't all have to come out of this year's budget. That's just kind of for council information.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't apply for the ITRB's Culture and Tourism Grant and get a fifty-fifty match, so it would only cost us twenty-five hundred bucks.
Okay.
I mean, that, I don't remember what...
That's what I was wondering, if there were some grants out there. So that would be for this, but then is, are there grants that could help the businesses, do you know?
There are, and that's, I, I actually had a discussion about EDA, or with EDA about that. Unfortunately, we're, we were such in the stages of infancy of redesigning this Bavarian theme and everything else, that to, to start a program, and there, there's definitely, there's definitely some, some avenues with the ITRB that would help us fund that program and, and do things to, to accomplish this goal of, of, you know, I guess, reinventing the Bavarian theme, but I think we gotta take some steps first and kind of get our ducks in a row before we can pursue that. You know, it's kind of one of those carton before the horse things again, so I think this whole modeling and, and whatnot, and the, the subcommittee that also proposed this is extremely close to having a Bavarian themed ordinance revisit with a, you know, more of an attachment of some guidelines for design, as well as a, you know, kind of an architectural review committee. Obviously, some of your bigger cities have a, you know, actual architecture on staff, which, you know, we know, we'll never have that, but they got some good plans, and I, I believe that'll be brought up at the next SD two meeting, which we are currently, in fact, I just got a text about scheduling it right now, so I, I think we're definitely gonna make a step in the right direction, and I think using some of that Culture and Tourism money would fit this, would fit this profile as well, so.
Just in answer to your question, my understanding is that the, the loans or grants that are available to businesses relate specifically to energy efficiency and possibly expansion for growth, but not necessarily for aesthetics.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but that would be a good question to answer when we have a workshop.
Then maybe something to, like, a different agency too, like AOA or something like that. I'm not positive.
So we do have a motion on the floor. Go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you.
I'm confused with the motion first. Is it for five thousand, is it for twenty-five hundred?
The motion was made, I believe, for five thousand, so it would have to be amended if we're going to do that.
No, I just asked what the motion was.
That's my understanding.
In the two thousand twenty-four budget, do we have money for that? That's the second question. Is there a...
That's a question for the Budget Committee and for the City Administrator.
I wasn't on the Budget Committee in twenty-four.
Jeff, well, when this was brought up, Jeff said there was money in, in the budget for this year, for the strategic plan, and I don't know if that has been accessed or not.
Yeah, we do either the, out of the capital stuff, or even out of the, out of the art funding. And I guess that, I don't know if it needs to be determined, it's a night.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
My discussion's over. I just, I don't wanna be accountable, that's all I ask.
And your question was whether we could do the full five thousand?
I didn't, I wouldn't know what the motion was. Had I mentioned twenty-five hundred this year, twenty-five, I don't, I don't know what the motion was.
The motion, I, I believe the motion was a five thousand, so if we're not going to do it, we're gonna have to amend it.
So the answer is yes, and also I'd like to follow up on the use of that, of our low interest loan fund.
Okay.
So my understanding, unless I misunderstood completely, was the motion that's on the floor is to provide the five thousand dollars that was requested.
Did you want to amend Steve?
Nope.
And it is in the budget?
I heard yes.
Okay, I'm just clarifying.
That's why I asked it.
I don't think that...
Exactly.
I don't believe that precludes us from applying for a grant to, to cover some of it, but we're, we're committing that we'll come up with the money one way or another.
Okay, I'll support.
Well, you already did.
Yeah.
I think that was you, or was it?
I would, I support it.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Are you texting her?
I'm letting all you know.
Okay, item nine M, which was the discussion about the lands, completing the land sale to Sean Callahan, and Jeff has talked about some interesting, I don't wanna say barriers, but things you've run into.
Yeah, this is one thing that I was trying to wrap up last week, and it's always been kind of odd in that the land sale is such a kind of nebulous piece of land. I'm trying to find, like, can I find a way to get the actual purchase agreement drafted, all those purchase agreements? If you've got a nice block and block description or parcel ID or something, you plug that in there, but I've talked to a few different realtors and title companies that don't really get any traction on it, so I'm not sure how, I'm not sure what the next, the kind of legal step is to create something. The council's passed an ordinance, passed an ordinance a while ago to sell this land, but to actually complete the transaction, I've been chasing my tail on.
So I, I sent you the parcel number, right? You have the parcel number, correct?
The, the parcel is for, so yes, the parcel is for the Banger Spur.
So it'll have to be...
It's getting a section of the Banger Spur.
Yeah, so...
So be able to record that, that, that has to be...
Well, it's kind of like the land for Steve Burdatch. I mean, that was that whole five acre parcel, but he only got one point two seven acres, so it would kind of be like that. So the county has to assign a new parcel number, the way it's...
Right, and we're, we're basically talking about a piece of land that does not have a geometric boundary. That, that piece of land had, it was, it was a shape that we carved up into a smaller shape, and that's all part of it. This is, and I'm, and I don't even know the legal terminology, and this is a description of some property that we need to now define as a smaller piece. I guess to kind of sum it up, we got the, the description that we got is a very short, one line, that port, that portion of the Banger Spur lying within section sixteen tons of fifty-eight range, sixteen, or something like that. And when I asked surveyors if we could get a, a more precise description, they, in a good natured way, laughed and said, "Ah, it's railroad property," that's what she got. So that's what I've been chasing my tail on.
Because it does say it's eleven acres, and that's what, I wasn't sure, like, were we going to just sell one acre? I, I don't even, I don't know how big that patch is that we wanted to sell to Sean.
And, and I don't know the area of it either, but it's the, it's the section of the Banger Spur that lies within a certain section, which is definable. It's a certain, it is an actual legal square. So the portion of the Banger Spur that's in that legal, that legal square. So I can, on the GS, I can point to you what it is.
Yeah.
It's this. We can go, we can walk, okay, here's what it is. But getting it into something that a title company or somebody will actually put into a purchase agreement or deed is where I'm...
Well, I mean, because he's been waiting two years, so I just, I, I really wanna see this move forward, and I think it should be a priority for us. I mean, he wants to expand his business, and he's been very patient with us, and I think it's kind of got pushed to the back burner. So I don't know if you and Larry can work on that, or...
We, we, in fact, Chip and I have talked about this a couple of times. What we're looking for is a valid legal description of a piece of property that's in the middle of, of the property that's owned by the ITRB. And I brought up the practicalities of it to him, that we're selling this to him for one dollar, and if we get a legal description, it might cost us by a surveyor thousands of dollars. Doesn't make too much economic sense, I know we've agreed to sell it to him, but he wanted the money on it.
Wouldn't be the first time. I thought we had discussed that it had to be a quick claim deed, that that's what we would transfer? Isn't that what we had discussed?
It, it would be a quick claim deed, I'm, I'm sure that, but we still need a legal description of the meets and bounds or the boundaries of the property. And I can work with Jeff on this. There is, there is a real way to have a look at it. There, there must be some sort of, this can't be the first time in the history of Minnesota that this, that this happened. There must be some sort of process or solution. I mean, if there, if there's costs involved, then the council needs to know about that too, but I agree with Matt. There is a process, but I, I assure you, there'd be costs involved.
Well, then I guess it would be, well, in my opinion, it would have to be transferred to the buyer, if there's costs involved.
Costs.
The costs would have to...
Over and above a dollar, you mean?
Pardon?
Being over and above the dollar he's paying.
Yes, yes.
And then the question is, does Sean want to go ahead with it, under those circumstances?
I guess...
That's all we gotta work on.
That, yeah, that would be something that you guys would have to discuss with him.
I, I agree with Counselor Waller, it'd be nice to have this move forward, if for no other reason, so we can look, we can not have to discuss it again, just to get it off our, our checklist.
Well, S E H, S E H, didn't they do the Burdatch land parcel, and that was all railroad land as well? Somebody out there's gotta be able to do this.
And so that's, I'm, I'm assuming and hoping that as well, but the hurdle I'm getting is whether it's realtors and title companies. I don't think they're fully grasping how vague it is, so yeah, yeah, we can do that, if it just gives us the, gives us the land description, and then I give them the land description of that portion of the Banger Spur lying within northwest corner, southwest corner, whatever. And we could, I believe we've got, where we could, we could get somebody to write that up, but when it goes over to San Luis County, is it worth that piece of paper that is printed
All we can do is try. You know, and from, like you said, it's been two years. That particular property that he's connecting to, his property taxes there, total property taxes were fifteen thousand dollars this year. City, the city portion of that was almost four thousand dollars. So by getting him more land and being able to take it off public roll and put it on tax roll, the investment back into our tax base would, would have, in two years, would probably all made up for the, the cost it would take to parcel it out, so.
I don't know, please proceed, or...
Yeah.
Our time was with Jeff on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else I missed, or?
Nope.
Okay, we'll circle back to item I, discussion of agenda meeting guidelines. Jeff, anything to add to this?
Kind of a discussion item to, let me clarify things and maybe put some concerns or fears to rest. Now, this, the meeting was brought up as a, as a method of getting some of the questions answered and keeping the meetings a little more efficient, which it has. People are kind of suspicious about just what's allowed and how far to go with the conversations in the, in that meeting, and then the other one that I want to clarify is, we had talked about who's present at the, at the meetings, and when we first discussed it, we were kind of talking about communities where their practice is that staff and departments are at all. And when we first discussed it, we were kind of talking about communities where their practice is that staff and departments are at all those meetings. And I, you know, I've kind of seen those. And then the council kind of talked about, is it, well, is it every meeting, is there required? And are we looking at paying overtime for here and well, and then it, there really wasn't a definitive yes or no on that. So is it some, I guess that'd be the easy, the first question to knock out is, is it something that the council wants staff to give reports or answer questions monthly? And our department head staff is fairly strong. And then the other side, I just, the rules that we want to make sure that we stay within the, the legal boundaries of what, what we can do. It is a public meeting, so we gotta stay legal in that way. And then I would say that there's also the, just the concept of, although we're discussing it at those meetings, kind of be aware of if we get into the six o'clock meeting and every, and every item is just motion, second vote. You know, that maybe kind of keeps people that are, weren't at the 5:30 meeting kind of out of the loop of just what that was about. We'll have to rehearse the whole conversation, but, you know, keep that in mind that if, if all the questions are answered before that, then, you know, the public sees as a vote.
Well, we're two and a half hours into this one, so there's certainly plenty of discussion.
And I guess-
I don't think you have to worry.
I didn't realize we were shooting for the seven hour meeting.
My, my question for the city attorney is, in the 5:30 meet, were you, did you see or hear anything that you thought was a transgression in terms of what the coun, did the council cross any line that we should not have crossed in our conversation?
I don't, I don't believe you did. The trouble with that is, is that when you, all I'm concerned about is, we need to discuss what's on the agenda. And when we put in reports or something vague like that, I mean, you can go all over the board. We did, we didn't tonight, but it's very possible.
My only concern about reports is, we've only got 30 minutes, so I, there's a, and we kind of push, well, we were a little shorter tonight, but most of the time we kind of push, push to the end of, so I don't know how much, how much room we have to add to that.
And if, if you watch other communities and the way they do that with the agenda, like Virginia's a different, completely different animal. They do a committee of the whole meeting, which is, you know, a lot different. But Aurora, Two Harbors, a few other places do the agenda setting. Whereas, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a librarian, we don't have a, you know, city engineer, we have a contract engineer, but we don't have, such as like Mountain Iron has a full-time staff on a few different, different items as well. But I think what we're doing has been great. I think it's been working. I know there was a little bit of issue with last month's with having a presentation from a different organization, which that does not meet the requirement of this meeting, which is why it's considered an agenda-setting meeting. I think that, you know, such as a, a few, a few items ago, when Councilwoman Walden had said, you know, are we allowed to discuss it before there's a motion? Any of those type of questions that would come up for the staff that is related to items on the agenda would, could be done in that meeting. You know, and I think, I, I think what we're doing has been fine and, and, you know, as long as Larry hasn't noticed any, any issue with it. I mean, we're not making any decisions, it's just a discussion, so.
I, I agree. I felt, feel it's very helpful, especially like with Matt here, you know, telling us what, you know, these change orders and things like that. And people can come at 5:30. I mean, it's not like we're saying they can't. So if they're, if they feel they're missing out on things because we're discussing them at 5:30, then I guess they can come at 5:30.
And, and some of the stuff that I'm looking at is just kind of best practice stuff is, and it's stuff that I've seen, you know, different time and place. It does exist where councils have something like that or committee of the whole meeting on Thursday morning at 9:00 AM. And then the Monday council meeting comes along and it's motion, second vote, motion, second vote. And that can kind of, you still, it's legal, it's completely legal, but it can, it can give a bad image.
I think Councilman Bird covered that really well. We, if, if that's what we're doing, we're doing it very, very poorly.
And then, yeah. And then this is a discussion of items, so keeping within those rules. Is there any objection, do we, do we want staff here when there's something pertinent on the agenda? You know, we had, Lauren was here when we were talking about purchasing streets, that type of stuff.
That makes perfect sense.
Absolutely.
And Dan is normally here, so, you know, questions about the fire declaration.
We got Brian.
Yeah, we do have another officer that's sitting, so I mean, that does-
Actually, Tracy's on the department.
I'd like to bring up-
You know you were speaking for the department?
No, this is a question I had.
Jewish.
Can I bring up something?
Absolutely.
And I'm going to use Patty and I as an example about tonight, because I, I've heard this happen. It's just that I happen to remember this because it was tonight. But I've seen it because the council members complained that the meetings go too long. So when I brought up in the 5:30 meeting about the cemetery and that we're going to bring it up the next meeting, then it was brought up in the council meeting again. And so my, my thing is, is with, with Peg, did she need to bring it up at that 5:30 meeting and ask the question? And do we, or does it come up again in the council meeting? Because the council members complained that the meetings go too long, but then when I look at the tapes, it's the council members who draw out the meeting, okay?
Sometimes.
A lot of times. So I'm just saying that's, it's a, it happened tonight. And so the question, because this, my understanding of this 5:30 meeting is supposed to be a question meeting and it could have been answered at the 5:30 meeting and it didn't take long in this meeting, I understand that. But it's just the idea that it was brought up again.
No, it could not have been discussed at that, because it wasn't on the agenda.
What, discussed where?
The cemetery.
The cemetery. Yeah, right, but then, but then it was talked about at this meeting.
But it could not be discussed at the 5:30 meeting because it was not on the agenda.
Right, but the question could have been answered.
No, because we're only supposed to be discussing what's on the agenda at the 5:30 meeting. I brought it up as one of my council concerns.
So then we gotta be very careful that, you know, because I asked, I called Jeff because, you know, do I bring it up at what meeting? And he said to bring it up at the 5:30 meeting, and that's why I did it. All right, so it's like, that has to be clarified because otherwise I wouldn't have said anything.
Like next month, you could bring it up at the 5:30 meeting if it's on the agenda.
And we didn't take any action on anything, so.
I still don't know if I got an answer, but okay, fine.
My approach is, I'm just going to wait for the city attorney to, to throw something at me or, or to blanch. Then I'll know that we might have crossed the line.
Okay.
So balls in your court.
I'll do it.
I know you will.
Good.
Believe it or not, we have completed new business. This is the chat, the open forum section of the agenda. Members of the community can bring things to, to the council. Speakers will, it says, speakers will be limited to five minutes. John, anything to, for the council?
No, I was waiting. Well, just like Jeff, I talked to you this spring about, they held a, a stack of pictures or by, oh, some of them there. Winter's coming, and shops are getting higher and higher. And another thing, my dad got up in the sand last spring, brought down, it still hasn't been swept up. There's no reason why the city employees have to be told everything, everything, have to be told. Well, we can't do it until we get orders from somebody. I see what's going on all over town here. They go here, and they go there, and they go there. Dirty head of day, our city pickup coming from Pineville. Are they going to do it up there? I don't know. And another thing, Steve, I worked there at your job, when there's stuff to be done, you don't get orders from, you do it, right? Here, like this spring right here, all the manholes are covered with leaves. We're already, the storm, storm's already went. And another thing is, we check with Gilbert, they're getting back to Kathy. They got a four man crew there, I think, and one works at the cemetery all the time. He's been up the cemetery, he works at the city. Years ago with Kathy, before you hit, you're thinking right there, all the city streets were paved before I went to work. And I've been talking about for 66 years, and it never got stuck on a street and told me, well, they do a good job now. But things forever. And we had old equipment before. Now they got all new stuff. We had an old grader. That's it. Okay, I thought.
Thanks, John.
I, I'm not going to keep you all, but I just want to bring up the recent vandalism that's been happening and just stress the importance of those cameras or even maybe just some fake signs that say smiley on camera kind of thing. I talked to Travis at PortaJohn and that's the third hand sanitizer and carrier that they, that he's put in there. And he's not going to replace it again. He did it to me as a favor. Otherwise, the city gets a 5 bucks for every time that gets replaced. Twenty for the bag, thirty for the holder thing. So when people complain there's no hand sanitizer in there, you can tell them now, this is why, because that's the third time. And then same thing with the porta potty that was extremely vandalized over there. The second event we've seen is probably the windstorm, but the first one, it was beat up so bad that they had to take it back to the porta potty shop, so. So after this downtown ballpark, there's been several incidents. There's still kicked in door behind the bathrooms and the women's bathroom door also, you can't even close it. So it's just, I don't know what we need to do to address the vandalism and whatnot.
I did have a quite lengthy discussion on Thai about all the vandalism just over the course of the weekend, so. Got a couple of plans.
Oh, and one other thing, it doesn't matter where you are or where you live, you can't park opposite of traffic flow. And it's a law. Like you shouldn't need a city council to tell somebody to issue a parking ticket. I took a walk Friday night, Saturday night, and it was like vigilance. So it's not like a quick running in grabbing five, you know, five minutes, drop off and stuff like it's rapid. And there's also, it's been brought to my attention, that logging truck that comes into town. We allow fully loaded logging trucks to roll around residential streets? That's a heavy piece of equipment, so.
We need to fix our parking ordinance for that because that shouldn't be allowed on residential streets.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
I brought it up about a year ago and it went nowhere, so.
And not only that, but where he parks, there's a small child that lives next door and that truck is loud and comes in jingering all the time. So just, those are just my suggestions.
Okay.
Well, residential streets aren't meant for fully loaded logging trucks either.
Brian or Casey? Brian, you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
God, we're not even done yet.
It's 8:23 PM. The council is going to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D dash 05 dot 05 to discuss possible land sales. When we come out of the closed session, there will be, the only action the council will take will be to adjourn the regular meeting. So it's, give everybody a couple of minutes to powder their noses, whatever you need to do. And as soon as the council chambers are cleared, we'll get going.
Stand up before you can't.